The time is noting that the time is 1:01 PM, I'll call this meeting to order. Thank you for joining us for today's pre-mapping public hearing of the County of San Diego's Independent Redistricting Commission, also known as the IRC. My name is David Bame. I have the pleasure and honor of serving as Chair, and I want to offer greetings, welcome, buenos dias, bonjour, mahaba, and I wish I had other languages that I was more competent in, but we welcome all the participation today, both in person and virtually. It's a great honor to be here for the last of our pre-mapping public hearings, but certainly not the last time we'll be talking to the public and hearing from the public, about, but in particular today, about your communities of interest. I want to note that today's format is indeed that of a public hearing, which includes the legal requirement that the commission may not discuss or take action on public input offered today, except to ask brief clarifying questions, or to request that an item be added to the agenda of a future IRC meeting. I also want to note for the record that today's hearing is a general public hearing. So while it's being held in District 2, the information and the venue for legal purposes is not specific to any one district. Today's hearing is, though, part of a series of IRC public hearings intended primarily as listening sessions for us, the IRC, to hear from you. Our purpose here today is to listen and learn as much as we can about your communities. The information, this information is critical for the IRC's work in drawing new boundaries for each election of the five members of the County Board of Supervisors for the next 10 years. Obviously, that makes it all more important to hear from the public at these public hearings, which were intentionally scheduled and come before the IRC begins its formal line drawing work in October. Let me now ask the IRC clerk, David Hall, to provide additional information about today's meeting. David?
Thank you, Chair Bame. At this time, I'd like to invite any members of the public who wish to speak to the commission during today's meeting to please review the instructions posted on the redistricting website at san diego county.gov/redistricting. We ask that individuals who wish to speak to the commission complete a form in advance for planning purposes. Individuals participating remotely are asked to submit an online request, and all individuals wishing to speak in person can complete a physical speaker slip. Staff has speaker slips available. Having said that, all timely requests to speak from the public made at today's meeting, either in person or remotely, will be honored regardless of whether you have submitted an advanced request. Thank you, Chair Bame.
Thank you, David. So we now move to a roll call. Thank you again. David, can you please call the roll?
Thank you. I'll ask the commissioners to say here or present when I call your name. Chair Bame?
Here.
Vice Chair Katerina?
Here.
Vice Chair Garcia? Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Chen?
Here.
Commissioner Diaz?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Dostal? Commissioner Hansen? Commissioner Inman?
Here.
Commissioner Krugliak?
Here.
Commissioner Larson?
Here.
Commissioner Pons?
Here.
Commissioner Russ? Commissioner Serbin?
Here.
Thank you. We do have a quorum, Chair Bame.
Thank you very much, David. Thank you, Commissioners, for being here, and a special thank you to Commissioner Brown, who I understand lost internet last night, but made the effort to get somewhere where she could connect. It's really appreciated. To start off soft today for the public hearing, I want to turn to Commissioner Ken Inman. Ken, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair Bame. Do we have the slide deck up? Thank you.
It's up.
Yeah, I see. So here is what we're going to be covering today. We will begin with a brief presentation, as you see on screen. First, we'll provide a refresher on redistricting. Second, we will explain what to expect in this redistricting pre-map public hearing. Third, we'll provide a brief overview of our Community Builder Tool. And finally, most importantly, it will be your turn. We need your input, because as you will find out, as you will find out, we need your participation to make this process work. And to help us understand who is attending these public hearings and to ensure we are reaching as many people as possible, please fill out the postcards on your seats, or hand it out when you arrive, or if you're joining us virtually, please visit our website and fill out the voluntary survey. Next slide, please. Thank you. So what is redistricting in San Diego County? Well, redistricting is the process of redrawing district boundaries for each of our five supervisory districts so that each has reasonably equal populations. We draw new boundaries every 10 years based on the federal government bestial census, which is a count of all individuals residing in the US at the location where they live. The census data reveals what population changes have occurred over the past 10 years, and where, and there are usually quite a few changes, growth in some areas, declines in others, for example. We redistricting, or draw new district boundaries to rebalance the districts for fairness and equal representation. So here are, next slide, here are the specific criteria the IRC is required by law to use. Their criteria are listed in order of priority in which they must be applied. First, districts must be reasonably equal population. This rule is required by the Constitution. Second, we must create a map that complies with the Federal Voting Rights Act to ensure that minorities have a fair opportunity to elect representatives of their choice. Third, districts must be contiguous so that all parts of the district are connected to each other. Fourth, districts must minimize the division of cities, neighborhoods, communities of interest to the extent possible. And fifth, districts should be geographically compact such that nearby areas are not bypassed for more distant populations. In addition, we cannot consider the place of residence of any incumbent political party or political party in the creation of a map, nor can we draw districts for the purposes of favoring or discriminating against an incumbent political candidate or political party. And you'll see on the slide, it reflects the changes to our county's district boundaries from 1991 to 2011. Next slide, please. So there are also specific criteria to San Diego County. Those are three of the five districts must include unincorporated areas. Two of these districts must be comprised primarily of unincorporated districts, unincorporated areas. As a point of reference, the County of San Diego includes 18 incorporated cities listed on this slide, mostly in the western part of the county. Those 18 incorporated cities actually comprise about 2.8 million people. Outside of that, you see on the map, though, most of the county is actually unincorporated territory or land outside the boundaries of the 18 incorporated cities. The unincorporated area has a population of about a little more than half a million people. Next slide. So why does redistricting matter? Well, you see a big number at the top, $7.23 billion, and that's the budget for San Diego County. So redistricting matters because maps are drawn, because how maps are drawn and how communities and neighborhoods get grouped together or separated can affect whose voices are heard on Election Day for the next decade. Redistricting done properly ensures communities have a fair opportunity to elect representatives of their choice, and as such, in the allocation of that $7.23 billion, have those representatives reflect their interests. In the IRC's case, we'll draw new district boundaries for the five members of the Board of Supervisors, the governing body for the County of San Diego. The Board is responsible for making decisions about how the county's budget gets allocated. The slide shows the county's budget for the current fiscal year, and a small sampling of some of the responsibilities of the Board. County supervisors make decisions about things that affect you and your neighborhood. So your ability to have a fair chance in electing a supervisor who represents you is extremely important. Next slide, please. How will the commission gather the information to draw new boundaries? But it comes from two primary sources. First, the 2020 census data, attend recently compiled and collected. We'll provide a quick peek at some of those numbers in just a moment. Second, we use public input, information we gather from you to help us learn and understand about your communities of interest. Go ahead and pop to the next slide, please. Now, just a little more about what a community of interest is, or COI for short. It's a contiguous population that shares common social or economic interests. It should be grouped together within a single district for purposes of its effective and fair representation. Communities of interest are not defined by their relationship with political parties, incumbents, or political candidates. A COI might be defined by a culture or a shared common language, but there are many other ways to define a COI. A neighborhood that is adjacent to an international port or a port of, or a point of entry could identify itself as a COI because it shares common interests pertaining to dealing with the impacts or effects of having an international border or point of entry as a neighbor. Information about COI comes from the public, from people like you telling us about their COI. The census data gives us information about the size of a population or neighborhood, but it won't necessarily tell us about the issues or concerns that bring that community together. Here are some questions that can help you identify or define your COI. Does your neighborhood share certain celebrations or traditions? Street festivals or parades? Are there important places where your community gathers, like parks or community centers? What's the history? Do you have a shared history in your community? Other questions you may ask, are you part of a community who's, who has issues that have not been adequately addressed by your elected representatives? Has your community come together to advocate for important services, better schools, roads, or health centers in your neighborhood? Have you worked for more recognition or support for your community, like having holidays recognized or historical events commemorated? Public hearings like this one today are expressly offered for the purpose of hearing from the public about their communities and communities of interest. So I hope you've heard how important your input is to us, and by showing up and participating today, we know you understand that. So here are some other ways you can provide input. You can provide that input in this public hearing today, which is the last of our eight such public hearings. You can submit written testimony at any time, email, or even regular mail. You can draw a map and submit it. I'll be talking about our Community Builder Tool, where, which is an online tool for doing that, and I'll tell you more about that in a minute, or you can actually, you know, take a page out of a map, draw your community on it, put it in an envelope, and send it to us. In all cases, provide as much detail as you can about your community and the characteristics or issues that bind you together, and why you should not be separated. When you do this, it's also important to include key landmarks or geographic features that define the borders or boundaries of your community of interest or COI. So the Community Builder Tool is our online tool developed by Flow Analytics for providing input about COIs. You can find a link to this off of our webpage. The tool is designed to help you submit information about your community of interest. We can't simply download this data or find it on the internet or in other places. So we really encourage members of the public to use this tool to help us gather the data we need. It's a critical part of the process, and Flow has tried to make the tool as accessible and user-friendly as possible. If you follow the steps on screen after you click through from the link on our website, it will take you to the tool where you can find instructions and an animated GIF that will show you how to use it. So on to the next slide, and this is the one I always get excited about because it's actually got data. Let's take a moment now to talk about the actual census data. This table shows both 2010 and 2020 census unadjusted population totals for the County of San Diego and each of the current five supervisory districts. When we say unadjusted, it means that this is the actual data coming straight from the 2020 census. What we use for the official redistricting database is provided by the California statewide database and adjusts this data to take incarcerated populations and move them back to the places where they would be living if they weren't incarcerated, so we can count them actually where they live instead of where they're incarcerated. That data was actually just released earlier this week on Monday, and what is today? Yeah, on Monday, the 20th. And so we're looking at, we're looking at pulling that data in to our platform shortly. The ideal population in this table, the ideal population is total population divided by five, the number of supervisory districts. It's the population redistricting tries to achieve for each of the districts. In 2010, the ideal population was 619,063. Due to population growth, that's gone up to 659,722. Percent deviation is magnitude over under ideal population for the district divided by ideal population. This shows as a percentage how far a district is from ideal. For example, in 2010, District 1's population was under ideal by 9,536, which in percentage terms is a negative 1.5%. So they were under the ideal population by 1.5%. This went to being under by 2.8% in 2020. Again, one goal of redistricting is to get these deviations as close to zero as reasonable. A general measure of population balance is given by overall range, and it's defined as the largest minus the smallest deviation. By definition, in 2010, districts do have reasonably equal populations, was an overall range of 2.7%. And as expected, changes have occurred over the last 10 years, such that districts now are more out of balance with the overall range increasing to 4.5%. Next slide, please. This table shows population, the population changes behind the increased overall range for 2020. As you can see, overall, the county growth rate 2010 to 2020 was about 6.6%, with all districts also experiencing positive growth, although at varying rates. In District 3, it grew fastest at 8.6%, and so had an increased deviation in 2020. It was the fastest-growing district. District 4 grew slowest at just under 5% or 4.9%. It actually went from a positive deviation, if you remember from the previous slide, of 1.2% in 2010 to a negative deviation of 0.4% in 2020. So that's it with the numbers. I'll turn it back over to Chair Bame to discuss the redistricting process. Thank you very much for being here today.
Explanation of some pretty complex numbers, and also for your enthusiasm. I, I hope fellow commissioners and the public are learning to how, how data can be truly exciting. I'm feeling better about it every time I hear, and I do appreciate, and I think we all appreciate, the clear description. So thanks for that. So by law, the County of San Diego IRC must do a couple of things that you see on this slide. In particular, holding public meetings, like our regularly scheduled IRC meetings that occur twice monthly, as well as additional special meetings, and gather public testimony through public hearings like you're attending today. That all happens before you draft maps, and so, as I said earlier, we can learn about the community and especially about particular communities of interest and how they may relate, may relate to maps and the data that Ken was just discussing. We also have to draw draft maps, conduct more public hearings on those maps, and I'll go into that in a little more detail later, and of course, adopt a final map. That final map is adopted after we've gone through this lengthy, intensive, and hopefully, very public and very transparent process that leads us to a map that will be used for County Board of Supervisors elections, as I said earlier, for the next decade. An important note here, we are an independent commission of census and volunteers. We operate completely independently from the influence of our elected officials, and we are responsible only to you, the public, in our duty to draw fair and accurate maps for the county, and eventually that final map, as we discussed. Next slide, please. As Ken mentioned, and as I think many of you know, we've already had eight pre-mapping public hearings, including today's, that's listed at the bottom, and at least one has been held in each district per our requirements. As you can see, this is the final public hearing listed for this phase, but there will be two more draft map public hearings later, as well as a number of other meetings. And I'll mention this website again later, but if you go to drawyourcommunity.com, you will find all this information and a lot more. Next slide, please. Here's a timeline that shows the activities and the timing the IRC has been following, and what we're planning to work through from now until the final map is adopted with that deadline of December 15th. We are currently at the end of that green phase, which really goes through the end of September, but in terms of events, the last event is today. As part of that phase, the US Census Bureau did release raw data to the states some time ago, and as Ken said, that data has now been processed by the state to create California's official redistricting database that was released on September 20th. Now we are beginning the blue phase, if you will, the drawing of draft maps. That will start in early to mid-October. Each draft map will be published for public comment, and we'll be holding at least two public hearings during this phase to hear from the public about the proposed new district boundaries. And again, a number of other meetings where public input will be welcome and valued. And then at the end, that last big circle on the right, we'll adopt a final map for the county with a deadline of December 15th. Next slide, please. We'd like you to participate and stay involved. We appreciate your participation today, but we really appreciate it in the coming weeks and months. If you have questions or comments about anything regarding redistricting, whether about communities of interest or anything else, please contact us. This slide has all the different ways you can contact us. And just to note, any information you see can be found on our website, again, drawyourcommunity.com, including links to the Community Builder Tool that Ken mentioned, FAQs, frequently asked questions, email, requests where you can subscribe to our newsletter, requests for meeting schedules, agendas, and speaking engagements, and a host of other resources and training opportunities. Next slide. That concludes the overview presentation to start this last pre-mapping public hearing. I say that because it gets us to the good part, the heart of why we're here, to listen to the public, to hear from you. At this time, I'd like to turn to our clerk again, David Hall, to tell us about the methods and invite any public speakers we have to address us today. David?
Thank you, Chair Bame. I would like to note, as I began, for the record, that Commissioner Hansen has joined us subsequent to the roll call. So far, we don't have any individuals present who have requested to address the commission. We do have 10 individuals who have requested to address the commission remotely. There's also a group with individuals who have organized remotely, and we'll hear from them first. I'll also note that we've received 29 ecomments and one letter for this hearing that have been or will be distributed to the commission and posted online. The commission will begin by hearing from a group and some individuals that have organized remotely. Next, we'll hear from those in person who have submitted any requests to speak. I'll then call on remote participants who have submitted a request to speak. And then we'll hear from any remaining public comment from those present. Even if you haven't filled out a speaker slip or choose not to give your name, the commission would welcome your comments. Finally, we'll hear from any remaining public comment from those participating remotely. Individual speakers will be afforded three minutes. Group presentations will be afforded 10. So now I'll begin with the organized presentation that has been organized remotely. Janine, are you facilitating the organized presentation? I've allowed you to speak. You may need to unmute yourself. Calling on Janine Erica. Janine, I'm still showing you as being muted. Janine Aricat? Okay, I'm going to try MidCityCon. Is this the organized presentation? We understand that there is a presentation organized remotely.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, I'm sorry. My name is by mistake, Azmit Cityken. Can you please change it to Yasmina Abaid Majdal Center?
Okay, we understand that it is Yasmina. So you're organizing a presentation, you're going to begin with an individual speaker for three minutes, correct?
Yes, thank you so much, and
Okay, welcome.
Thank you so much. Can I turn on our camera? Because we have community members here. And again, I am not here on behalf of MidCityCon. My apologies, I'm logged in the wrong account.
Okay, our technical support has said that you should be able to turn on your camera at this point, and we would be able to see you.
I do not see the option yet. I only see the unmute button. There we go.
I'd also like to thank May for being present, as I have an opportunity to do Arabic translation. Thank you for being here.
Can you hear us and see us well?
We can hear you and we can see you. Please begin.
Awesome. Thank you so much, and apologies for the technical difficulties. Hello, everyone. My name is Yasmina Abaid, and I'm the redistricting fellow with Majdal, the Arab Community Center of San Diego. And we're really here today to first, thank you all for being so accommodating in making sure that you are allowing community to really represent themselves and speak in their languages, speak in their community spaces, and tell their narratives and stories. So thank you so much for that. And then second, we also would like to thank May and all the interpreters that have been doing wonderful jobs to make sure that our personal testimonies in Arabic are also translated correctly. With that being said, a little bit about our center. We are a community-led center here in Alcohun, based on East Main Street. Majdal is representative of many Muslim, many Arab community members who live in Alcohun and surrounding areas that are unincorporated in Alcohun City, but also live in other areas like Encanto, Spring Valley, La Mesa, Rancho San Diego, and so on. So we're here today to really encourage you all to make sure that our communities continue to be connected as we redraw the lines and to name what those communities are. So again, I am here today to emphasize the importance of including southeast San Diego and other San Diego BIPOC refugee and immigrant communities together in a single supervisor community district that includes Alcohun, Rancho San Diego, La Mesa, Spring Valley, La Presa, and so many more. I mentioned La Presa because I live in La Presa. However, as a center, we are making sure that the other areas are incorporated. In addition, we are defining Alcohun as, as with La Mesa, Bostonia from the north, Rancho San Diego, as well as, as well as, I'm sorry, as well as, yes, so we have Bostonia, Rancho San Diego, and La Mesa. Yes, thank you. And we're here to share that we really would love for La Mesa, for Alcohun, to remain united in a single district and be included with other BIPOC refugee and immigrant communities throughout the county to ensure that our shared needs as BIPOC refugees and immigrants communities, such as affordable housing, equitable transportation access, and English-language services are adequately addressed by the San Diego County Board of Supervisors. We see ourselves as, we define our COI as BIPOC immigrant and refugee, and we see ourselves in community with Alcohun, City Heights, La Mesa, Lemon Grove, Rancho San Diego, Granite Hills, Bostonia, Paradise Granite Hills, Bostonia, Paradise Hills, Spring Valley, Encanto, and Skyline. Thank you so much. And with that, we can move on to our community members in the presentation.
Thank you. And I understand you will be asking for Arabic translation for the group presentation?
Yes.
Okay, May, thank you for being here. You'll be afforded twenty minutes.
Thank you so much. And we'll start with our first community members, Hadil. Hadil, are you? Actually, Hadil will not require Arabic translation, May, but the rest of community members after Hadil will. So just letting you know. And Hadil is our resource navigator with the center.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Hadil Karim and I'm the Community Support Navigator with Majdal Arab Community Center of San Diego, which is located on East Main and Alcohun. Our communities have shared language, cultural practice, food, and common goals for our children and families. We often speak Arabic language with our communities and we celebrate Muslims holidays together. We are immigrants, refugees, or children of immigrants, refugees. Our communities are mainly composed of renters, English language learners, and large families, and many prioritize affordable housing and English as second language services. I define my communities in Alcohun that I work with on a daily basis by these general boundaries. Bostonia to the north, Granite Hill to the east, Rancho San Diego to the south, and La Mesa to the west. Some communities landmarks are as follows: Majdal Center, East Main Street, and ICSD East County. I'm writing you today to emphasize the importance of keeping Alcohun united in one district as well as including San Diego Refugee Community together in a single supervised district. Last but not least, I would love to thank you for giving me the time to speak today. Thank you so much.
Do you know your name?
My Yes. Hello. My name is Asmaa Abdullah.
Wait a minute, how do you say it so that I can translate it? She's saying hi, my name is Asmaa Abdullah.
Yes. My name is Asmaa Abdullah.
Asmaa, good God.
Muslim Syrian, and I represent Majdal Center. The Arabic Center in Alcohun, which is located on Main Street in Alcohun.
The Islamic Center on Alcohun Street.
I live in Encanto, in San Diego, on the street of Atkins Avenue.
I'm sorry, my name is How do you say it?
I live in Encanto, in San Diego.
I live I live at Encanto Street. Go ahead.
On the street of Atkins Avenue.
On Atkins Avenue. But your hand is pointing at your mom so that I can understand.
My son is going to Lincoln School. And my son is going to Lincoln School.
Both my children, boy and a girl, attend Lincoln School.
And my eldest son attends Grossman College. Our community shares religious food, many, many other activities together. We speak Arabic language at home and we celebrate different religious and and Arabic and cultural festivals together. We are immigrants and refugees and children of immigrants and refugees. I'm here today to emphasize the importance of including the area of Encanto to the neighborhood areas, communities. The areas that include refugees and immigrants are The areas that include refugees and immigrants are The areas that include Alcohun, Bostonia, City Heights,
Bostonia, City Heights.
Rancho San Diego, Spring Valley,
Rancho San Diego, Spring Valley. Lemon Grove.
And the Granite Hills.
Granite Hills.
Yes. We describe our communities and the importance as follows. Immigrants, refugees, original communities. We believe that our area is included within Zone Number Four. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak and hear me. Thank you. Thank you, Asma.
Hello, everyone. My name is Leila. I live in Encanto, Atkins Avenue, and I go to Lincoln High School. I'm with Majdal Center today. Our community has shared languages, culture, practices, food, and common goals for our community. I'm here today to emphasize the importance of including Southeast San Diego and other communities. Yeah, thank you for listening.
Hi, did you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Hi, good morning, I mean, good afternoon, everyone. I have, I come here for Majdal and I want to talk Arabic about our community and Arabic people. I want to say how we, I am, my name is Nora. I live in San Diego, City Heights, and in the street, it's Estrella Avenue. So I want to talk Arabic about our community and how we be one hand. Always, all of the Arabs will be one hand and we talk Arabic about stuff. We share everything. If we have problem or some stuff, we be one hand always. So we want, we want City Heights in Alcohun City to be like connecting and we don't want to like to get off with it. So my, I want to come here to talk about that and like how we be one hand. We have to be strong. And all of the people and Arabic people, they need really hard help to get many things. So that's why we want to be one hand always because Arabic, we can do it. We can try. We can get help. We can make our own stuff. We can like when we be one hand, we can do really much better stuff. That's why we want to be like connecting and we be one hand always. And thank you because you heard me today and I really appreciate it. And I want to thank everybody in here.
Thank you.
Salaam alaikum wa rahmatullah.
He's saying salaam, which is a greeting in Arabic, saying hi to everyone. Peace be upon you all.
My name is Mahir Al Falaah. I live in City Heights.
My name is Mahir Al Falaah. I live in City Heights City.
On Estrella Avenue. I'm here with the Majdal Center. I'm here with my family. We live in City Heights and we're here to eat and drink. And we're friends here and we're friends. We're helping each other.
Please translate it. Mahir, please translate it. I'm here to represent myself and explain the services and the connection we have in the community of City Heights. We're really good connected community within other members in the community and we really get support. We share food, we share activities, and also we share when we need support in like, for example, filling documents or getting attend or to get attending certain governmental paperwork. We help each other within the community. Please translate it, Mahir.
I want to thank you all for listening to us and we hope to help you. And we want to be friends and share our good work and help the country.
So I want to thank everyone here who is giving us the opportunity to speak and to share our emphasis to keep us together within one community and so we can all stay supported and connected to provide the best for the community and for the whole country.
We thank you for listening to us and we want to be friends. We want to be friends and be one person. Because we want to be friends and we're friends.
Yeah, we would like to emphasize the fact that we want to stay together and not to separate us because it means a lot to us when we stay around our family, friends, and not to be disconnected from each other. That means a lot for us as individuals and as families.
We thank you all for listening, inshallah.
Thanks for everyone. Thank you, Mahir.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm not sure if they're in here, but we should have Mohammed as well as possibly Salma and Inji. If any of those folks are in here, they are part of our presentation. Salma is, I see Salma's hand, if she's able to continue.
Sure. So is that conclusion in working to individual speakers or is this part of the group presentation?
We have time, so it could be part of the group presentation.
Okay, I've done Salma. Welcome to begin.
Okay. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Salma and I'm with the Majdal Arab Community Center of San Diego, which is located on East Main Street. Our communities have shared languages, cultural practices, food, and common goals for our families. We often speak Arabic with our community and we celebrate Muslim holidays together. A lot of us come from immigrant, refugee, or children of immigrant and refugee backgrounds. And our communities are mainly composed of renters, English language learners. We tend to have large families and many prioritize affordable housing and English as second language services, especially in schools. I define my community in Alcohun that I work with on a daily basis by these general boundaries. Bostonia to the north, Granite Hills to the east, Rancho San Diego to the south, and La Mesa to the west. Some community landmarks are the Majdal Center, East Main Street with a lot of Arab restaurants and stores, and ICSD Islamic Center of San Diego East County. So I'm here today to emphasize the importance of keeping Alcohun united in one district as well as including San Diego refugee communities together under one supervisor, supervisory district. As a newcomer community, the majority of us speak a primary language other than English at home and are limited English proficient. Alcohun has historically, has historically seen high numbers of refugee resettlement relying on strong community networks for mutual aid and support. So we see ourselves in community with City Heights, Lemon Grove, La Mesa, Rancho San Diego, Granite Hills, Bostonia, Paradise Hills, Spring Valley, Encanto, and Skyline communities. And our community of interest are composed of Black and people of color immigrant and refugees. We also see our communities included in the current fourth district. In addition, Alcohun must remain united as a single district and be included with other refugee communities throughout the county to ensure that our shared needs such as affordable housing, equitable transportation, English language services are adequately addressed by the Board of Supervisors. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. And I have gone ahead and invited Inji.
Hello, my name is Inji. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm a volunteer at Majdal Center, the Arab Community Center of San Diego. It's located on East Main Street in Alcohun. I have been a resident of La Mesa for five years. I live on University Avenue and currently attend San Diego State University. I spend a significant amount of my time within the community of La Mesa in Lake Murray, Harry Griffin Park. I frequently travel to Baltimore Drive, Fletcher Parkway within our community. Our community has shared languages, cultural practices, food, and common goals for all children and families. I often speak Arabic, Hatabi, with my community and we celebrate Muslim holidays together such as Eid and Ramadan. We are immigrants, refugees, and children of immigrant refugees. I'm speaking to you today to emphasize the importance of including La Mesa and other San Diego refugee immigrant communities together in a single supervisory district. We understand our voice and participation in the redistricting process can help ensure that the redistricting plans adopted by our jurisdiction do not harm our community. As a newcomer community, the majority of us speak primary languages other than English at home and are limited to English proficient. I see myself in community with Alcohun, City Heights, Lemon Grove, Rancho San Diego, Granite Hills, Bostonia, Paradise Hills, Spring Valley, Encanto, and Skyline communities. And we define our community of interest as BIPOC immigrant and refugee. We also see our communities included in the fourth district. In addition, La Mesa must remain a united and single district to be included with other refugee and immigrant communities throughout the county to ensure that our shared needs as BIPOC refugees and immigrants such as affordable housing, transportation access, equal access to the political process, English language services are all adequately addressed by the San Diego County Board of Supervisors. Thank you so much for your time and consideration today.
Hello?
Yes, do you want to wrap up?
Yes, so just to wrap up, thank you all again for allowing us the time to present to you all as the Arab Community Center of San Diego. Again, we define our COI as immigrant, refugee, BIPOC communities and would really, really urge you all to keep our communities connected. Again, those in City Heights, Lemon Grove, Alcohun, La Mesa, Rancho San Diego, Granite Hills, Bostonia, Paradise Hills, Spring Valley, Encanto, and Skyline. And thank you all again and have a wonderful day. Please use the center as a resource for you. If you need support, if you ever need translation, if you ever need to be connected to community, we're more than happy to be a resource for you all. And use us as staff and volunteers as a resource for you all as well to ensure the Arab community is heard and represented in the redistricting process. Thank you all again and have a wonderful rest of your evening.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize May for being here to provide Arabic translation. Thank you for doing this. And now move to individual speakers who are participating remotely. I'm going to ask all of those who have requested to speak remotely to raise a virtual hand. It will make it easier for me to find you. Click the raise hand button on Zoom or press star nine if you're participating by telephone. I'm going to ask all of those who have requested to speak remotely, uh, to raise a virtual hand, it will make it easier for me to find you. Click the raise hand button on Zoom or press star nine if you're participating by telephone. And our first speaker is Charlie Jones. Charlie, you'll be afforded three minutes to address the commission. If it's agreeable to, please begin by stating your name of the audio record.
Um, yes, my name is Charlotte Jones and I'm a resident of Oceanside, um, California. I support District Five, um, will unite Oceanside, Carlsbad, San Marcos, Vista and Escondido along the seventy-eight corridor. That's it. Thank you for your time.
Hi, good afternoon, commissioners.
My name is Vince Kattula and I'm a representative of the Chaldean Catholic Diocese of Saint Peter the Apostle and also one of over fifty thousand Chaldeans that reside in these counties. Just a quick little background on the Chaldean community. We began immigrating to the United States as far back as the sixties. However, the majority of us immigrated in the eighties fleeing persecution. A substantial number of Chaldeans also arrived in the mid-two thousands escaping a war-torn Iraq with the latest wave arriving just a few years ago fleeing ISIS. Over the last several weeks, I've spoken with our community leaders, uh, who should be submitting some e-commerce in the coming days and have gathered this summarized feedback. It's estimated that over ninety percent of Chaldeans that reside in the county live in District Two surrounding our three churches. Saint Peter's on Hampshire Road in Rancho San Diego, Saint Michael on East Washington in El Cajon and Saint John on North First Street in El Cajon. In addition, while our businesses can be found throughout the entire county, there's a very large concentration of Chaldean-owned businesses on, in East County, which is evident through a quick drive down Main Street in El Cajon. The influx of refugees has created demand for housing, which we've all heard and are very familiar about throughout California. And while the desire for the, uh, typical Chaldean or refugee is a single-family home, many refugees are finding themselves in low-income multifamily housing. We would ask that the commission consider where we live, work and pray when drawing the new district line and if possible, include new swathes of land in East County that could be developed as new single-family housing in District Two. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Kyra Green, you have three minutes to address the commission.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, members of the San Diego County Independent Redistricting Commission. Thank you for your time and for your service to the community. I am Dr. Kyra Green, the Executive Director at the Center on Policy Initiatives, CPI. The Center on Policy Initiatives is a local nonprofit research and action institute. We use research and public education to build alliances throughout the San Diego region to ensure the voices and interests of everyday working people and diverse communities are at the center of decision-making. My organization and others have worked over the years to ensure that redistricting in San Diego County is a fair process that protects democracy and fights against discrimination and systemic disenfranchisement. As you've been doing your work, CPI has been doing its work as well. We've held community conversations with individual, individuals and organizational leaders to understand how residents envision moving from their individual communities of interest to five supervisory districts that group these communities together in ways that fairly represent all San Diego. As you have heard and will continue to hear yourselves from community members today, we have heard some clear messages about what's important at the district level. There is a general consensus that the commission's map should uphold the Voting Rights Act by drawing a majority-minority Latinx district in the South. CPI has sent you a letter with additional details on this point. That includes our position that you should right the wrongs of the last redistricting process by uniting the border communities of South County and not including Coronado and Point Loma, which clearly have different social, demographic and political interests in the South area communities. We have also heard that District Three should be a district that is a strong center for cultural community issues as well as a district drawn with care for keeping Asian, Asian-American and Pacific Islander communities together. We have heard a desire that District Four be drawn to ensure that the historically Black and the historically LGBT communities are kept together within this district alongside growing BIPOC, Arab, Muslim and refugee communities that have emerged in the South and urbanized eastern parts of the county. Though these might seem like very different groups, we've heard loud and clear that folks live together in a magnificently diverse mosaic and they'd like to see it kept together. Finally, we've heard residents believe that District Five should be drawn with the seventy-eight corridor as its design, defining feature. All of these communities are currently part of San Diego's regional plan for North County. This area has grown larger and has become more urbanized over the last ten years. From Oceanside to Escondido, we've heard folks describing themselves as part of many different communities, but part of one region with deep connections and patterns of interaction. These communities share transit and social school districts as well as having similar trends and perspectives related to public safety, jobs and housing. Thank you for listening. Thank you for doing the work of this sometimes difficult, occasionally contentious, but beautifully democratic process.
Thank you. Joseph Saad, you have three minutes to address the commission.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, thanks. My name, uh, you said Joseph Saad. I'm thirty-one years old, uh, San Diego native, son of Lebanese immigrants. And I guess I'm here just informally representing the COI of what I would call the Maronite community in El Cajon in District Two. And the reason, um, it's important in District Two is we have our church, Saint Ephrem, Maronite Catholic Church in El Cajon there off Navajo. It's been around for several decades and I would say it's, it's essentially the center of the Maronite community in San Diego. Uh, real quickly, just want to give a quick thank you to Vince Kattula who commented earlier, he had notified our Lebanese community about this redistricting, uh, redistricting process and about today's public hearing. And while he's a member of, you know, the larger Chaldean population community in San Diego, I appreciate him wanting to give a voice to some of the lesser-known Middle Eastern communities such as the Lebanese Maronite one. And just to sum things up, the main purpose of my participation here is just to make it known to the redistricting commission of the presence of the Maronite community in case you guys were, we're not that aware of it. It's in, you know, District Two because like I said, that's where Saint Ephrem is in El Cajon. And it's really a strong cultural, it's really, uh, significant to our culture, um, physically because we have an annual festival over Memorial Day weekend. Usually we had it over Labor Day, just this last, uh, month. Lebanese festival attracts thousands and, um, we just think it's important to be aware that that's a, an important part of District Two, um, not only just on a local level, but for the county as a whole. Uh, thanks for listening and that's it for me.
Thank you. Lucero Sanchez, you have three minutes to address the commission.
Yes, thank you. Good mor-, uh, sorry, good afternoon. My name is Lucero Sanchez with San Diego Coast Keeper. Uh, I support that District Three be a coastal corridor with Encinitas, Solana Beach, Delmar, La Jolla South to Point Loma. These communities have challenges, opportunities, cultures and interests that are shared, distinct and deserve representation. For instance, Encinitas and Solana Beach share guardianship of the San Alamo Lagoon Habitat and Trail that connects these two cities. Having a coastal district that can take lead on issues like stormwater, sea level rise, lagoon protection, coastal erosion, clean oceans, coastal access is all essential. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Sharon McKeeman, you have three minutes to address the commission.
Hello.
Hi, we can hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry if it's noisy where I'm at. I'm a busy mama, uh, but I am calling in because I am a North County resident in District Five. And, uh, North County residents, we look at ourselves as a community of interest. Many of us have lived in each of the cities that are part of District Five and consider ourselves North County residents even more so than the city we reside in. Um, one thing I'd like to address is that I know it's been brought up a lot that the seventy-eight and seventy-six, uh, traffic corridors need to be kept intact. I wholly, wholeheartedly agree with that. Um, also, I know that there, it's been brought up that, that coastal area. And something that is so unique about District Five and North County in all of the country is that we span from coastal to farmland and that is a very unique and distinct part of our community. And in a time, uh, when things are very divisive and people don't feel heard, we do feel heard by having one supervisor, uh, represent our North County District Five area as a whole. If anything were to be done that would take away that coastal area, um, that wouldn't be a minor change. That would be, excuse me, a massive shift that would totally alter our community of interest and, and really destroy it, I feel. And then on the same hand, those traffic corridors, along with the overlapping schools, uh, the, the different government agencies, the rental properties, the faith communities that are so interwoven, you can see it right in the name of so many churches and businesses in the area. They, they begin with North County in their name because we are really a community of interest. We're extremely diverse, but in a time when many people are leaving California, because it is a difficult time, I've heard from so many North County residents that the reason they're staying is because they don't believe they could ever find a community so connected and so unique as North County anywhere else. So we work hard, um, and we rely on each other and it would really be a disservice, uh, to break this, uh, District Five that identifies as North County up in any way. Um, I really appreciate your hard work. I know it's a difficult thing that, that you're looking into and I know that there's some numbers that need to be balanced, uh, but I do think you'll be able to balance those numbers without breaking up District Five in any way. And, um, you know, I love that you keep in mind that we're each individuals, business owners, parents, uh, members of faith communities a- and, and that we're not just numbers. So thank you for what you're doing. Um, I will be putting forth, uh, my input in the, the drafting process and all of that as well. And just know that every person that you hear calling in stands for many, many more. I know that I'm speaking today for hundreds, if not thousands, of people that feel similar. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Luis. You have three minutes to address the commission.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Uh, my name is Luis Montella Adams and I'm speaking on behalf of the San Diego LGBT Community Center and presenting information specific to the LGBTQ community of interest. The center functions as San Diego's LGBTQ's anchor, uh, organization and is led by thirteen-member Board of Directors, employs more than seventy-five paid staff and utilized more than twelve-hundred community volunteers to achieve its twin goals of promoting LGBTQ health and wellness as well as human rights. For the purpose of defining our COI, I would like to use the following freeways: the eight to the north, five to the west, ninety-four to the south and eight oh five to the east. We also request that downtown San Diego be included in our COI. Since the last redistricting process of twenty-eleven, the San Diego LGBT Community Center has consistently promoted voter registration and participation within the LGBTQ community. And through our efforts, we have built a universe of over forty thousand registered voters in San Diego County with whom we engage every election. Although we cannot definitively say that every member of our supporter database identifies as a member of the LGBTQ community through the process of mapping the residences by using their voter registration addresses, we've seen that there's a large concentration of LGBTQ voters that live within the previously defined region. San Diego has been a leader in LGBTQ political engagement and redistricting for the past three years. Within the city of San Diego, City Council District Three was one of the first districts in the country to be developed in order to empower the LGBTQ community. Today, we ask that you not divide the LGBTQ community of interest and include the previously defined areas as part of a single district. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Debbie Wrestler. You have three minutes to address the commission.
Hi there, um, can you all hear me? Okay, so first I wanted to say you very much for allowing me to participate in this process. I appreciate the time that everybody has put into this to try to make sure it is an equitable process that best serves the communities of the county. I first moved to San Diego County back in the late eighties and I've been living in Escondido since, for about the last nineteen years. I've seen a lot of change in the Escondido community in that time, whereas it used to be predominantly rural and agricultural, certainly with the amount of development and residential housing that has come in. I've seen much of it in the last nineteen years. I know that started well before that. I feel like the community has shifted significantly and really is best aligned with the other communities along the seventy-eight corridor. I think that things involving education, transportation, housing, jobs and so forth really would best situate Escondido with those other seventy-eight communities to represent it properly and best address the needs of the people that live and work here in Escondido. So I support a district that puts Escondido with those other communities along the seventy-eight corridor as opposed to the more rural East County areas where it has been historically aligned as far as the county districts. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat F., you have three minutes to address the commission. Pat, you may need to unmute yourself. Okay, go ahead.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Thank you for listening to my, uh, statement. My name is, uh, Pat Frazier. I'm a resident of Oceanside. Um, I've been a resident of Oceanside since nineteen seventy-one and my community is made up of a very diverse group of residents from the beautiful beach through our varied neighborhoods to farm country in Las Maras Hills. Um, I, I favor support, I support that District Five will unite Oceanside, Carlsbad, San Marcos, Vista and Escondido along the Highway Seventy-Eight Corridor. Commissioners, we appreciate your time and the challenges that you've endured while you were, um, listening to all of us. Would you please give our community the power to have our voice, um, heard and our interests championed? Along the seventy-eight freeway are these cities: Oceanside, Carlsbad, Vista, San Marcos and Escondido. We all share the same economic system, including jobs, schools, healthcare and housing. We, big rapid growth in suburban North County Vista and San Marcos made the traffic and the transit along the five and the seventy, seventy-five, uh, congested. However, Escondido should be united with Vista, San Marcos, Carlsbad and Oceanside along with the corridor of seventy-eight and into the current District Five where we all belong. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Kathy Steele?
Good afternoon, commissioners. Thank you for hearing my comments today. My name is Kathy Steele and I live in San Marcos, which is currently BOSS District Five. I'm here today to advocate for a united seventy-eight corridor which connects the cities of Oceanside, Carlsbad, Vista, San Marcos and Escondido in one Board of Supervisor district. We are sister cities whose roots are deeply intertwined. It has never made sense to me that these five cities are not together in one district as we share much in common. Expansive growth is projected for the next ten years. Healthcare systems such as Scripps and Tri-City, a transportation network that traverses the seventy-eight corridor, common environmental issues, cultural connections and schools, to name a few of the issues that bind us. In terms of environmental planning, what affects one of us affects us all. Although Cal State San Marcos and Palomar College are situated in San Marcos, students from the five corridor cities attend classes there, often using the Sprinter as their only mode of transportation, thus tying together ed- education and transportation needs. San Marcos Unified School District has two elementary schools in Carlsbad. It wouldn't serve the residents of Carlsbad or San Marcos to break up a school district, nor would it make sense. Although we live in San Marcos, we are in the flight path of Palomar Airport in Carlsbad and are concerned about the noise and environmental pollution an airport expansion would cause. While such an expansion would be convenient for folks in East County, they don't have to suffer the consequences an expansion would bring. We are united with Carlsbad residents in this belief. The needs of urban suburban residents are vastly different from those of rural residents. While we both identify as North County residents, we couldn't be more different. The rural parts of The rural parts of San Diego County do not face the same growth issues that Seventy-Eight Corridor residents do, and their economic systems vastly differ. I respectfully ask the commissioners to draw district lines that fairly represent the needs of these Seventy-Eight Corridor cities: Oceanside, Carlsbad, Vista, San Marcos, and Escondido, and draw district lines and include them in one Board of Supervisor district. Thank you so much for your time and your hard work.
Andrea Hethru, you may need to unmute yourself.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Thank you for your service. My name is Andrea. Oh, boy. Problem. Okay, I'm backed up. Can you hear me now? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. My name is Andrea Hethru. I am a resident of the Valencia Park community within the city of San Diego. The community of interest to which I belong is that of Black residents of San Diego County. I urge you to draw a District Four that will include La Mesa, El Cajon, Rancho San Diego, Spring Valley, Skyline, Bay Terrace, Paradise Hills, Valencia Park, and City Heights so that the will of Black residents of San Diego County can be appropriately solidified and amplified to remedy historical and current acts of anti-Blackness. I ask that the commission unites our historically Black and emerging Black communities into one district so that we can elect representatives who will work vigorously to affect the will to: One, redress the legacies of restrictive covenants; Two, address current and past housing and employment discrimination; Three, remedy and stop anti-Black housing appraisals; Four, remedy the exclusion of Black businesses from public works contracts; Five, correct unresponsive and abusive policing; Six, correct and remedy racially biased prosecution and sentencing; Seven, solve our extremely disproportionate rates of homelessness; And Eight, get our just share of grant monies dispersed by the county. That won't happen if our voices are drowned out by an overwhelming majority who do not have the same urgency to solve these problems, even those immigrant populations who are here as a result of the civil rights victory fought for with the blood, sweat, and tears of foundational Black Americans as codified in the Immigration and Naturalization Act of 1965, which eliminated racially and ethnically exclusionary provisions of the previous federal immigration statute. However, let's be clear that solving these problems is in the interest of all San Diegans who want a healthy and just county. Thank you. That concludes my comments.
Thank you. Ellen Nash. Ellen Nash, you may need to unmute yourself.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is... Hello, good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. I'm happy to be here. And I first want to thank the commissioners here for taking the time out of your busy lives to readjust and realign the maps so that they are fair and equitable to all communities. I first want to echo everything that the previous speaker has said. I currently serve as the Chair of the San Diego Black American Political Association of California, and I do support the idea of collaborating and collapsing the neighborhoods that have been mentioned into District Four rather than splitting some of those neighborhoods up between three Board of Supervisors. Let's bring them all together under one supervisor in D4. I'm also concerned that this particular format will also strengthen the voting power of Black Americans, and all Americans, but primarily Black Americans, so that we can have a much stronger, powerful voice that represents the interests of all African Americans, Africans, immigrants, as well as other people of color that have been mentioned on this call in relationship to the collapsing of those neighborhoods into District Four. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. A caller whose last four digits are 5694. You may need to press star six in order to unmute yourself.
Hi. Good afternoon. This is Jose Franco Garcia. I am a resident of West Chula Vista, a lifelong San Diegan, and I'm also the Policy Director with Environmental Health Coalition. Just calling in to support the importance of making, following the Voting Rights Act and making a Latinx district in District One. You know, I have lived in District One the majority of my life, growing up in Nestor, right near San Isidro, now living in West Chula Vista. I work for an organization that does a lot of work in Baja Logan, the Pines. And, you know, those communities have all had connections as far as culture, their community of interest. And one of the big things that connects us is we are environmental justice communities suffering from, you know, the heavy impact of industry and other polluters right near us. You know, communities that are geographically not that far from us, but in culture and in community of interest are worlds apart by Coronado and others. And Point Loma should not be in the same district as us because they are not dealing with the same issues. And they are not, you know, they do not have the same challenges that we do as far as political interests. But we work together on some of these issues and the importance of them. I'll just say that as a lifelong resident, I mean, mostly lifelong resident of District One, it was, you know, rather shameful that this was the first time we had a supervisor that could speak Spanish from the dais. And we could hear that as many of our families in our households, in our schools, in our, the business centers around here speak Spanish. And that's, you know, an important part of our community. And it's all the way through the border areas of this part of San Diego. So, I just wanted to emphasize that importance of keeping District One, of actually making District One a Latinx-majority district so that we can have that representation at the County Board of Supervisors. And, you know, as we, as it happened this time, you know, we were able to work, but we want to make this something that can happen long term and we can move forward with that. Just with that, also supporting a lot of the other things that have been said today about other communities of interest. Definitely very important. But, yeah, as a resident of District One, just wanted to emphasize that. And thank you all for your dedication and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, first name is Mike. He wants to address the commission.
Hi, thank you. Yes, my name is Michael McDonald. I'm a member of Asian Solidarity Collective and a resident in District Four. My community consists of the midtown neighborhoods in District Four, but I grew up in District Five and visit family there and in District Two often. I am here to speak on urging you to draw district lines that respect the API San Diegans' communities of interest and empower our community. Many of San Diego's API residents and businesses are centered in the neighborhoods of Miramesa, Surrano Valley, Kearney Mesa, the Convoy Street Commercial Corridor, Miramar, and Rancho Peniskitos. Every community deserves a voice in county government, and it's time the Supervisor District lines reflect the rapid growth and unique priorities of San Diego's API community. Our community has never had a representative on the Board of Supervisors, and many of our neighborhoods have been split between numerous districts over the years. While our community has great diversity, we share many challenges that underscore the importance of keeping our community of interest whole, such as rising home prices in these rapidly growing areas, struggles with small and family-owned businesses to recover and rise out of COVID, and rising anti-Asian racism and discrimination. Our API community of interest is compact and contiguous and can easily be kept together as a whole in numerous district alignments, either in the current District Three or new district lines. Please honor the API community of interest and maximize our ability to have our voices heard in the San Diego County government. Thank you.
Thank you. Sophia R.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Redistricting Commission, for the time to allow me to speak. I'm here as a resident of Chula Vista, a San Diego County employee, and an SCIU-22 union member. I'm here to urge the Redistricting Commission to unify the border down south because aside from unifying our voices of those who cross the border and/or have family or business across the border, it also upholds the Voting Rights Act. Chula Vista has recently become officially a welcoming city, meaning that we accept all immigrants and try to be accommodating to these populations. And so, I believe that a united district across the border would help amplify the voices. I also agree to one of the probably many speakers who also mentioned that Point Loma would be better represented as a coastal, part of a coastal district. And that also urges and emphasizes the Voting Rights Act regarding the South Bay. Again, thank you so much, and I appreciate the time for letting me speak.
Thank you. Dr. Candy.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for allowing us to speak here today. My name is Candy, and I'm the Executive Director of Asian Solidarity Collective. I'm a resident of District One, but our organization serves all throughout San Diego County with over 600 members. Asian Solidarity Collective is a grassroots organization in San Diego whose mission is to activate Asian-American social justice consciousness and build Asian solidarity intersectionality with Black, Brown, and Indigenous folks, people with disabilities, queer and trans people of color in all oppressed communities. Our work includes political education, community building, and collective action. We currently have 45 active members with a larger base of 658 and counting members throughout San Diego County with 2.5% members who are South Asian, 26.3% members who are East Asians, and 53.8% of our members who are Southeast Asians in San Diego. Asians and Asian-Americans are looking for these affinity spaces to get activated and want to be involved in civic engagement and are involved in policy, advocacy, and service and collective action. Based on the data and the growth of our Asian population throughout San Diego, our communities share many cultural histories, traditions, and community spaces. Many of the Asian restaurants and grocery stores serve as hubs for generations of families and provide communities with opportunities to gather and build with one another. Many of our cultural Asian spaces and businesses have created cross-racial solidarity and continue to strengthen in our communities. I urge you to draw district lines that respect our Asian San Diegans' communities of interest and build our power. Many of our San Diego Asians, our residents, are currently in District Three and are centered in the neighborhoods of Miramesa, Surrano Valley, Kearney Mesa, the Convoy Street Commercial Corridor, Miramar, and Rancho Peniskitos. While our community is diverse, we still share challenges of trying to keep our communities whole. Right now, we're still struggling with rising home prices that are still growing increasingly. Many of our small, family-owned businesses are still trying to recover from COVID-19 and are continuing to struggle. And of course, we're still experiencing the rising anti-Asian racism. And we've been long underrepresented in local government. So, we ask you and we urge you to honor our Asian communities of interest and really maximize our ability to build power and have our voices heard in the San Diego County government. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Telephone number ending 6872. You may need... Go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Hi, my name is Grace Martinez, and I'm the Director of San Diego Ace, the Lines of Californians for Community Empowerment. I'm calling in support that District One be a majority-minority Latinx district, a border district that does not include Coronado and Point Loma. Up until just last November, it was the first time this border community, District One, actually had a Latino representative and someone who actually spoke Spanish. We hope and urge that this commission draw a South County border district that upholds the Voting Rights Act that includes all of San Diego's border communities across San Isidro, all across the international border. This district along the border would give a voice for so many of our South Bay residents with families that have jobs on both sides of the border. A district along the border would also ensure the cross-border priorities that matter greatly to all South County and are truly... Sorry, priorities that will... Having this district along the border would ensure cross-border priorities that greatly matter to all South County and are truly heard by the Board of Supervisors. The Tijuana River sewage crisis, pollution and deadlock at the port of entry, compassionate immigration policies that embrace San Diego's diversity and immigrant roots. One of the biggest obstacles to having our voices heard is being in the same district as Point Loma and Coronado. These are not the same communities. We do not share the same cultures and economics as Coronado. If people are familiar with the recent incident with the high school in Coronado and just the cultural insensitivity that does not align with a predominantly Latino community. Working families in Latino South County deserve a strong and equal voice, and we urge the commission to uphold the Voting Rights Act and make District One a majority-minority Latinx district. Thank you very much.
Can I ask you, before you go, if you're agreeable to doing so, to state your name one more time for the audio record?
Yes. My name is Grace Martinez. I'm the Director of San Diego Ace.
Thank you. May Case. You have three minutes to address the commission.
Hi, good afternoon, commissioners and members of the public. My name is May Case. I'm a first-generation Filipino immigrant, nearly lifelong San Diego resident, and currently a resident of District One. However, today I'm calling as a representative of Asian Solidarity Collective. I'd like to urge the commission to please draw district lines that honor API San Diegans and empower our communities of interest. Most of San Diego's API residents and businesses are found currently in District Three in the communities of Miramesa, Surrano Valley, Kearney Mesa, the Convoy Street Commercial Corridor, Miramar, and Rancho Peniskitos. While we are a diverse community, we share many challenges that underscore the importance of keeping our community of interest whole. We're seeing the struggles of small, family-owned businesses as they try to recover from the economic and social repercussions of COVID-19. You can also add a rise of anti-Asian racism and discrimination to this list of struggles. Our community is also experiencing the rise of home prices in this rapidly growing area. Our API community of interest is compact and contiguous, so it makes total sense to keep it together as a whole in numerous district alignments, either in what is currently District Three or within new district lines. There has been great progress in community input at empowering API communities, both in 2011 and this year's redistricting efforts at the city level. And so, it'd be smart of the county to take a similar approach. Every community deserves a voice in county government, and it's time the Supervisor District lines reflect the rapid growth and unique priorities of San Diego's API community. Thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you. Telephone number ending 9858. R6 to unmute yourself.
Yes, hello. This is Malcolm. I represent pillars of the community, and I also represent the Black community at large. That's my community of interest. Our organization is based out of Encanto, and I'm currently a resident of La Mesa. I'm urging this council to unite in District Four the areas that include La Mesa, El Cajon, Rancho San Diego, Spring Valley, Skyline, Bay Terrace, Paradise Hills, Valencia Parks, and City Heights. If you know about the Black community in San Diego, you know that we've lived in various different communities throughout the city at different times. There was once a robust Black community in Coronado, once a robust Black community in La Jolla. And over time, we've been priced out and gentrified out of many different areas. Currently, what we've seen in the last 10 years, we've been priced out and gentrified out of much of what was District Four. We are now migrating more and more east as affordable housing becomes available. District Four has already been redistrict and split in half, which dismantled and broke down the Black vote. So, we're hoping that we can... That you would... We humbly ask that you would consider unifying District Four with these areas I listed above so that we can come together and try to correct some of these systematic injustices that we encounter on a day-to-day basis. I thank you guys for doing the necessary work and taking the time to volunteer to, hopefully, God willing, draw equitable, unbiased lines. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mileena Abuan.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Mileena Abuan. I am a Filipino-American born and raised in District One, first from South San Diego within the Nest area, and now reside in Chula Vista. I am a union member of SCIU-61, and I'm also a council employee. I thank you all for this opportunity to allow our voices to be heard. As being a Filipino born and raised in San Diego, I can't truly identify one area that would voice all I need to Filipinos because we reside where our families have immigrated to before us or have come to the United States. to before us or have come to the United States by way of the military, and a lot of my families, they reside in Miramesa, Paradise Hills, National City, Chula Vista, and South San Diego. But that being said, the communities of interest that I voice are the communities that we work and live in, which are working-class BIPOC communities. You've heard many speakers before me, including colleagues from the Asian Solidarity Collective, ACE, the Environmental Health Coalition, and so many more, emphasizing the importance of keeping our voices together, and I voice those same shared feelings as well. So I ask and urge that you continue to heed and hear their voices, our voices collectively, so that we may maintain a unified San Diego that voices all I need. Thank you so much for this time.
Thank you. Figgy? You have three minutes to address the Commission.
Hello, my name is... Can you hear me now? Okay. Hi, my name is Christina Manan Hill, and I am with the Asian Solidarity Collective. I'm a resident of D4 and have also worked in D3 in the past two years. The D3 community is such an important community for my family and I. We spend many weekends in Convoy for our weekly groceries. This area is also a place where my family and I gather for family celebrations throughout the year. Many of the Asian restaurants and businesses in the community represent multi-generational families who share common experiences, both past and present, share similar interests, culture, and traditions, and community events. We share many challenges that underscore the importance of keeping our community of interest whole, such as rising home prices in this rapidly growing area, struggles of small and family-owned businesses to recover and rise out of COVID, rising anti-Asian racism and discrimination, and a long history of underrepresentation in local government. I urge you today to draw district lines that respect API San Diegan's communities of interest and empower our community. Many of San Diego's API residents and businesses are currently in District 3 and centered in the neighborhoods of Miramesa, Surrano Valley, Kearney Mesa, the Convoy Street Commercial Corridor, Miramar, and Rancho Peniskitos. Thank you so much for your time, everyone.
Thank you. That concludes those participating remotely who have requested to speak in advance. We still don't have any formal requests from those present to speak, but if you'd like to address the Commission, you're welcome to approach the podium at this time. Not seeing any movement. That concludes those in-person speakers. I'll give one more opportunity for those participating remotely. If you wish to address the Commission, please raise a virtual hand at this time by clicking the Raise Hand button on Zoom or by pressing star 9 if you're participating by telephone. Not seeing any requests to speak. That concludes public testimony for today's hearing. Chair Beam?
Well, thank you very much, David. Thank you, Commissioners. Thanks, staff. Thanks, our interpreter. Thanks to our hosts here at the Spring Valley Community Center, and most of all, of course, thanks to the public. This was a great turnout today. It's much appreciated. I want to thank everyone for their patience with technical and other issues that I think we overcame, and I especially want to thank everyone for taking time out on a busy Saturday. As I think one speaker said somewhat facetiously, "It may seem like we're enduring this." I hope not, because I think I speak for all of Commissioners in saying, "We really enjoy this." It's fabulous to be able to hear so many different views from so many different parts of the county, and it really does help us do our work and do it well. I also wanted to thank those of you who are serving your community or other communities. That kind of service is always appreciated, and it's nice to see. And I want to specifically thank Nora, Inji, and any other students who are joining today. It's really, really impressive to hear you participating so early in your civic life, and I hope in a few years, you and others will consider volunteering to serve on a Commission like this. It really is fun, and you're off to a great start. Once again, the IRC does have a very important responsibility to draw lines for these elections for the Board of Supervisors, and we just can't do it without all the valuable comments we heard today. If I'm counting right, we are up to somewhere in the neighborhood of 24 submissions on that community builder tool that Commissioner Inman mentioned. I hope there are more to come, and we're probably now over 500 public comments in one form or another. That's great, but we'll welcome more, and I'll talk more about that in just a moment. For those of you still here, please feel free to fill out the survey cards on your chair. For those participating virtually, please feel free to complete the online survey. What's coming up? As we wrap up this pre-mapping public hearing phase, we have lots of other opportunities for the public to participate. We will indeed have two draft public, sorry, two public hearings on draft maps. Those will be coming up most likely in November and December. We'll be talking about that more in our coming, so please stay tuned on that. But we're also going to have continued regular and special meetings of the IRC, where public input is always welcome and valued. The next IRC meeting, in fact, is this Thursday, September 30th, at 5:30 PM, and that's a virtual meeting. To join that meeting and see how you can participate in that and also take advantage of an amazing amount of resources that staff and Commissioners have put together, please again, feel free to visit our website, www.drawyourcommunity.com for more information and for exercising opportunities to speak. We look forward to seeing you at one of our future meetings. With that, I adjourn this public hearing at 2:37 PM. Thank you.